Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our whole council. A special welcome to our two new councils this evening. Pastor Harrison. Welcome to the public as well. First item on the agenda. A declaration of office to be signed or resolved. Any outstanding declarations to be signed are not appropriate within the council. I am reliably informed that two declarations have been signed already. So, welcome to us now, council both.
Thank you.
Do you have any apologies left?
The big left councillor is David Best and councillor Shelton.
Do we have any declarations in interest? Two new applications for dispossessions. Support from Ross, please. No, I'm not kidding.
No, and they could say they work on a standard report, but I've not received them.
Okay, so let's move on to Heritage and Council. You're with Embers. Who would like to go first?
Just in relation to the previous item, Chair. I understand when I was on holiday it was a serious incident after Y Fest in Prospect Terrace, which should affect some of my residents. I have typed up and gone back to the police and I've asked for a meeting with them to discuss exactly what options might be. I wanted to make sure that such an incident doesn't happen again. I've also requested through one of the residents that I meet with the Y Fest organisers. I just don't think an incident of that nature can just be let go because we must look at how we can actually ensure that our residents are safe and big events aren't happening. So, I thought you might like that as an update if you know exactly what I'm doing. Obviously, there's a number of resurfacing works around the town. And certainly Wolf of Road, I'm very pleased that they have resurfaced the part that was to be done three years ago. But I still wishes for the drainage, which I know about, and I'm hoping to walk that part of the road with the engineer for the water on Thursday or Friday. Pop, pop, street, high street, as you were grateful, say, hopefully will be done in a week's time. It's taken a long time for this to happen, a lot of effort, but I'm just hoping that this will be the sign of things to come and that Ross will not be neglected in the future in the way that we are being pursued now. But we will keep up the good fight and always make sure that we do get our fair share of investment. Continuing with the public realm, there are a number of what we call traffic regulations on the road now, which are numbers you will be aware of, particularly those on the planning and development committee in my ward. They're all to do with parking restrictions and Y Street where there's been a long standing anomaly where Y Street has been four hours waiting and the rest of that parking zone is two hours, which has obviously created problems for the main street in terms of the time that people park there. But there's also some changes in New Street and some changes in Archfield Road, particularly the top, to make that safer in terms of traffic flowing through the Wolf of Road junction, which is a multi-way junction. There's a bus stop there as well and often HGVs get stuck on the junction if I can't get down because traffic is coming up. So, residents have complained those are a little further down and they're winter coming out over the lane and have to be used to access. Actually, they don't have side or either side, so coming out almost empty, so we have no way to actually see what's happened. So, those three TROs are going forward. They've gone through the consultation stage. There has been very little comment on them, so it's just going through the statutory stage now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. I've been chasing for a bit of an update on Rife Development for the new school, the Sen School that's due to be opening. I've been updated that apparently I'm currently procuring a contractor to deliver the school with completion scheduled for next Easter. The contractor is going to be carrying out additional maintenance on the site as well, so Rife is going to be getting new roof and new windows, so it's a happy tidy up, which means we're looking at a likely opening in September next year. And a lot of residents, well, a lot, I've had several emails from residents asking who the school is going to cater for, and I've been informed that it will be for learners with moderate learning difficulties plus secondary need, e.g. autism. I've been chasing on the MIU as well and for an update from that. I've been talking with Hillary the last week, Hillary Horn, and she's got a meeting lined up with the new MD at Harrowford Hospital in the next three weeks. And part of the induction will be the meeting with Hillary and she will be raising the MIU with Hillary at that meeting to see if we can, can't move forward with the agreed proposal to deliver a strategy and ideas for what an MIU, a 21st century MIU, could look like. Touching on the market towns investment as well, there was a PGC recently, the £200,000 that's being given to the market towns. There was concern stressed by quite a few of us that that money wasn't going to be decided by the town councils and that it was going to be decided more so by highways as to what their priority projects were. But after that, we took a group consultation, we're now in a situation where it will be projects that the town councils are feeling are important for their particular area and that are not currently listed in the E25, E26 budget. So, we've got, it's basically what it was before. So, we've got a lot of mistakes, I'm pleased about that. And then, yeah, I've got an update on skate park, but I'll talk about that a bit later. Oh, and as far as the TROs are concerned, there's a major one happening along Gloucester Road and there have been some concerns stressed on that, which is going to include some rest of parking permits, which people have been asking about for some time. I had a meeting this week with the TRO officer and they have listened to some of the concerns stressed by local businesses and it has been modified slightly, but there will still be new restrictions introduced on Gloucester Road in the near future.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So, let's give thanks. Let's give thanks to a substantial amount of road research that's taken place in Ross over the last few weeks, including the stretch of the Ledbury Road from around the Gutt to Three Crosses Road. Inevitably, I was asked by a resident, have a cross in this, when the rest of the three roads can be done? The answer probably to that one is when it gets as bad as the top end was, sadly. But the county does continue to spend an extra ten million on road research in this financial year, so that is good news. The issue of the Ledbury Road sink is, I hope, moving towards a solution. I give credit to our MP's caseworker team, the chasing, all sorts of organisations, Welsh Water, Edenstone, David Wilson, and that's Department of the County Council. The planning application for the proposed care home, bottom end of St Mary's Garden Village, that will either be refused or go to the county planning committee within the next couple of months, although that timeframe is an order. And we still have, as Ed has said, about £200,000 coming to the town from the county for improvements to the public realm in this financial year. So, we're all hoping that these projects will be at least planned in the next few weeks or months and then hopefully actually carried out before the end of the year, wouldn't you?
I have a question about Brook End Street. Obviously, it's been done, I believe, about the 23rd. Who have you been speaking to and Welsh Water that aren't giving you dates or timelines on when they're actually going to do anything? Because if we end up doing this road, we're just going to keep it taking it back up all this. And there are much worse roads in the bigger scheme of things that need to be done, rather than doing Brook End Street and then having to get up in three weeks' time.
Who's up to that?
Well, who said this? I haven't contacted Welsh Water, no.
Officers have been...
Officers have been...
Been contacting Welsh Water, yes. Have been quite... The report I got, which was, came through, was that they had been not getting information that they required and they had not been given adequate timelines for anything that's going to happen. That's the extent of my view.
That's the one.
And has the resurfacing got to go ahead? Because obviously, there are issues underneath. I don't see the point in wasting a whole heap of taxpayers' money to have it dug back up in a couple of months. We know there's ongoing issues under there. The other side of the road, to my knowledge, has still not had a full survey. There's a collapse going on over the other side of the road, which is apparent. There's a distinct smell of sewage now down the Long Brook End Street and I don't see the point in resurfacing a road that's got to be dug back up.
It's a waste of taxpayers' money.
Absolutely.
Well, good service, I can talk to them on Thursday and Friday. There is a embargo after the resurfacing of two years.
And there is an, if it's for an emergency.
Yeah.
There is an...
If it was, I mean, three years.
It'd have to be dug back up.
If it was.
Because that would be an emergency. And it will have to be dug up because there are issues under there that are known.
Is it something that's a spot you could take to Harrowford?
Well, I'll make it to the group services, yes. I'll make it to the group services, I'm seeing it. Yeah, quite happy to see.
Okay, thank you.
The decision was, I don't know where the decision came from, surprisingly, yes, my one's in there.
Okay, so we're going to move on to public participation. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak tonight? Okay, so we'll start with the lady here.
It's about the recent election and two issues. One is whether they're going to poll in. I know so many people, even more, because it's actually my only time out by accident because nobody got a poll in. And I understand it was a decision of one person, I can't believe that's true in a democracy. But anyway, so there's that issue. And then, I had trouble on the day because I recently visited, it was back in July, I'd had letters to say that I was on the electoral roll, that was sort of central to all this. And then, shortly after that, I had letters saying, your address isn't registered. So, when I went to the polling station, I anticipated that there would be a problem and there was, I wasn't on the register, even though I was. So, I phoned the council and I reported, I spoke to the manager. And she rang me back eventually and it was because they were upgrading the system or something and my address had been wiped off the system. I would be very interested to know how many other people were wiped off the system and refused a vote but didn't then...
So, maybe we can ask Harrowford.
We can ask them, yeah, that is a...
Electoral services.
Yeah, well, we'll forward on that quote to electoral services, Harrowfordshire Council, see if they have the response boards.
Thank you.
Who else?
I've contacted a member of the public and we can't about drain, extra revenue, because it's blocked. So, I started racing meetings tonight, considering I'm aware of it.
I'm...
I've got a face, it's having a photo of it.
Sorry, is it the council list?
Yeah, I'm aware that someone that's working in the town at the moment has reported that now three times and they've accepted that it's an issue and hopefully it should be done. Again, that could change, but yeah, it's been noted.
I started again this morning as well and it's puzzled, it's going against our mind. And he's had an email from Harrowfordshire and sent a call to me and if he gets, if he doesn't get a response, I'll tell him.
Just, anyone else to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump onto the election, the bi-election, and I was wondering if you could let us all know what date the council knew of Ron Taylor's resignation and what date the council knew of Corinna Williams' resignation.
I'm sure we can find their status.
Yeah, before, I'm looking for some information, I can't find that.
It was May, May, um...
The May one.
Yeah.
So, I'll make the answer to that.
When it was May, the annual meeting with the town council was when both resignations were tendered formally with the council and the vacancy declared, or the vacancy declared.
At the annual?
At the annual meeting, I remember.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name's Alice Sachin. I represent the Harrowford Community Group, which is, take a lead for the project, which is in Harrowfordshire and the Jutombe Region. And we are now discussing to do the partnership from the grass, like from the small towns, the school and organisation, and we are very happy that we have support from Extristown. We have a couple of meetings and your team, and we already have a couple of school meetings who are expressly interested about the collaboration with the British schools. So, we have like a draft of the project, how to spread it around the Harrowfordshire, but we are very happy with Ross. We'd like the first place where we will start this project, which is really quite friendly. Jutombe Region, it's, first of all, a lot of people who are here in Harrowfordshire can't read this really personally. We had a good connection, pretty good, with a lot of organisations, like universities, schools, the community organisations, volunteer organisations, they were quite friendly in communication, in suggestions, and we decided that everybody would need to make something more bigger than just, you know, sending the letter and connection. We decided to make something that we could learn from each other. So, Jutombe Region, it is a place where the UG, our ambassador of Ukraine, is present, so it's his area and we already send some requests to him and I don't really know the response from him, but I'm sure it will be in big interest. Roswell is a city which is already found the place of, they're very similar geographical in, if to speak how it's looked like on a map, so a lot of, about nature, about culture, about river, and the operations really express the big interest. They're very open to do and support and we act to just want to put the paper on the wall. They want really to share what they learned from the three years of the war. And it's very nice because we, I had already received a lot of requests from their local artists persons who are happy to show some heritage things, which is already found here locally. So, it's quite a lot of things, not only taking, we now thinking like Ukrainians, this is time to spread our thank you for British people and to share and to, you know, to make opportunity to show about the Ukraine and also to be a part of, you know, this community here. Because we all expected war, the war will finish one day and the network system that we built over the last three years, we don't want just to close and forget our friendship. So, we think that means it will be something that will help businesses, you know, culture to continue our friendship and then we hope it will be soon, maybe this time, but for the moment, it is Ukraine in a place where a lot of country comes and wants to build this small friendship. And we think this star, my biggest work to support Ukraine, we don't want to be the last one who will build this project, you know? So, this is why it's nice to be the first one, it's nice to be, you know, known and visible because it's a lot of support from this part of the country place, it's really visible. And if you are happy to do this, I'm sure you will see a lot of nice feedback from your local authorities, but because it's not about taking, it's about sharing.
As for this one, if the lady, regardless of the polling card inquiry, if we like an answer, if we get one, perhaps you could bring a detail to us and we can respond accordingly, perhaps, to get an answer.
I'm sorry, are you addressing me?
Yeah.
Yes. Richard? Yes, I was going to ask you if you want...
Okay, so our next item is to resolve, it's one is in passing public. Post for this, you did right. Item. Later on, they did, that's the window. The second bit, that's the three. Like all those in favour? All those there? Any abstentions?
Which way?
Yes, fine.
You're fine, sorry, didn't see your hand. So, fourteen in favour, none against, one abstent.
Two abstentions, I think.
Yeah, I did two abstent.
Two?
Okay.
Next item is to agree the meeting minutes and last meeting of the council. Vote for this, please. Pastor Russell, say it. All those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions?
Pastor McAvoy, can you confirm your votes on that one?
I think it is, okay, thank you.
I think it is, no, it's...
It was good to see it, yeah.
Amen.
Okay, so next item, also an item wishing... Okay, so the next item is to review the recent election process and consider vacancy procedures required. Would anybody like to...
Um, yeah, I think there was widespread disappointment about the lack of polling cards and also how people are told about the election. Because obviously, if you get a polling card for your job, you're then made aware there is an election coming up. I know that the staff worked very hard within their remis to make members of the public aware, but I really don't think it's enough for local democracy or democracy at all to work. I actually hadn't canvassed for anyone up until three days before the election and obviously because the other parties were unaware that there were going to be no polling cards until about five days before the election, I decided to give a hand to whoever needed it. And actually, just in one road, eight people were unaware of an election taking place at all. Councillors did as much as they could via social media, but I just, I think it was a real, real blow for democracy and I can understand there's been a lot of talk about precedent being set in 2018, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. However, the fact that other candidates were not aware that there weren't going to be polling cards was shocking. So, I don't know whether the two of the candidates that get in would like to have a say, but as an outsider's perspective, I thought it was symbolic, to be honest.
So, going off of that and as obviously someone that's just done the campaign, as an independent as well, with no backing of any parties behind me to help me get the feet on the ground, it was a very, very big struggle for me to, it's just two leaflets, two different types of leaflets over that timeframe. I gave up time with my family because I really pushed for this because I wanted to be part of this group now, again, where it's meant to be democratic, just so I've had that little bit of information when I'm knocking on thousands of doors, and it was thousands, if you go over and over it, many a times, and I'm giving misinformation out to people. Now, that could have actually looked really bad for me, only up until the Friday before the elections, did we know there was no polling cards going out. However, I stood up doors on Thursday evening telling people, it's okay, it's coming, and then I had to then go and really knock all of them again to go, I'm really sorry, you're not going to be receiving anything. It would have just been even keel. It wasn't meant to be dog eat dog or anything like that. It is, again, the town council where politics and so should be left at the door, we work for the town. And I personally felt like that was something to kind of trip me up with and there was no need because at the end of the day, I have been successful, I am coming in here with a clean slate and I'd like to know who I could turn to now. I could have had that little bit of help from other party members or other councillors just to say, there's going to be no polling cards, we know this because it's one of our leaflets, let people know, because it isn't, again, about popularity, it's about the town. So, everybody had a right to know that they could vote, should have been notified and not just by me. It could have been from Richard here, or it could have been Matt and it could have been all the other campaigners as well. But it should have just been made available, that information should have been made available to us from get go. As soon as we knew, we were definitely running for it, this is what the information we need to give to our public in Ross. And it was game play in my eyes, I'm sorry, it felt awful. And like I said, I'm coming to this table with a clean slate, I'm not going to hold that over anybody's heads. But in future, let's just be completely open and honest with the candidates that are going forward and supporting them with the right information. Thank you.
Pastor McAvoy then, Pastor... Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo councillor Boylan and councillor Harrison's words, especially councillor Harrison. It was, it did, I felt we put the two independents at a real disadvantage with limited resources. But on a positive note, we try and be positive about these things, having lobbied the electoral services in Harrowfordshire, they have declared to me that they will cling to policies and processes to which, at the moment, we either know there is or is not going to be polling cards, they will talk to Elfrid Canada at the same day so they can oblige that information.
I was going to congratulate you on having made that happen because it should have been in place before.
Constable McAvoy, did they give any reason why they didn't on this occasion?
That was one of the questions on my FLY and they did say I was a Ross Town councillor this evening.
Not me, why they didn't inform?
They said it's fantastic, Ross Town Council to...
But they're... Well, that's...
Sorry, that the conduct of all elections within Harrowfordshire is the legal duty of Harrowfordshire Electoral Services. Ross Town Council does not in the election process. You may agree or not agree to fund polling cards, but all communications, the whole conduct, including the publication of all notices, is the responsibility of the legal duty of the Electoral Services.
Pastor Missler?
Yeah, again, councillor Boylan, well done on that, that's great news. I canvassed for a while as well, in a short period, but in that short period, I was quite shocked and surprised with the amount of people that didn't know there was an election taking place and said, oh, don't worry about it, I'll wait for my polling card. And then, when we were told they weren't getting one, they said, oh, can we not vote then? So, we spent quite a lot of time on the doorsteps explaining the... So we spent quite a lot of time on the doorsteps explaining the process and what wasn't happening. I understand there's been some discussion in the office, out of the office and on social media about what may or may not have happened and I understand that there's some talk about historically we have done this, historically we have done that. Quite frankly, I don't quite care what we've done historically. The decision, however it was made, and I would like to know tonight how it was made and by whom, should have come to this table and should have been discussed by everybody. So everyone was on eleven pile fields and we had a true decision. There's money in the budget, it could have been done if we had decided it and it should have come to this table.
Councilor Liston?
Right, listen, since at least January twenty seventeen, before I became councillor, this council has not funded polling cards for by-elections. And this is the third time such a by-election without polling cards has been undertaken. Um, yeah, I understand that, if you, now, can you carry on? Three existing councillors were present at that twenty seventeen meeting. And when two proposed and seconded the issuing of poll cards, the motion failed. All three voted for the non-issue of polling cards for that by-election. In twenty eighteen, the issuing of polling cards was again discussed and no vote took place and no polling cards was issued. Thereafter, polling cards have only been issued when another authority who are legally required to issue polling cards, e.g. Herefordshire or the Police and Crime Commissioner elections or a general election. Thus, the town council budget has assumed one election per year with no polling cards since at least twenty eighteen. Not one of us questioned this when the budgets were being drawn up or when presented to full council. The expression I often hear at the meetings is, if Julian is happy, then I am happy. And the only real discussion about how much, uh, about the budget is on how much to raise the preset, not what we're proposing to spend. So it is a collective responsibility. It should also be noted that we've been setting a deficit budget for the last three years and using our reserves to invest in Ross for keeping the preset tax level. Furthermore, at the end of each meeting, all councillors are invited to suggest agenda items for the next meeting. Also during any meeting, any one councillor could have raised the topic of elections, either during the grant report or finance. None of us did. We probably had three opportunities. I'll remind you all that we all have a collective responsibility to do so, particularly if you feel something has not been done or satisfactory. Without a vote, neither the clerk or any councillor can make a decision to commit the council to additional expenditure that is not budgeted for. We also took the decision to raise the clerk's delegations from two thousand to five thousand pounds. And the cost of polling cards at one pound per electorate was estimated to be over five thousand five hundred pounds. I further remind you that the current staff are less than two years in role. And this is the first contested election since we were all elected in twenty twenty-three. We're also a very busy council and over the last half months, staff have had to deal with the effects of flooding in May twenty twenty-four. And thank you to councillor Edo Driscoll for obtaining thirty K towards Ross.
Well, point of order, where, where is this going? This is addressing the points.
Re- refurbishment of the market house, including grant application, legacy project, parking issues at Holmes Road Car Park, leasing arrangements for Judith Hill and Lotsmans at Tinsler, and white value toilets, the groundsman, lengthsman, and I T contract reviews and issues arising from such, uh, from such contracts. Electrician insurance policy reviews, building maintenance, including, including this emergency repairs, this building's imoes repaired, Blake Garden payment, recruitment to at least three different positions, bands in the park, prongs in the park, children's activities during the holidays, grant applications.
Important thing is democracy.
And other events reports, Ross, please.
So I've got to go on the political speeches.
No, I'm not go, I'm not going on a political. I have to, I have to speak, so please be fine. Um, bands in the park, prongs in the park, children's activities during the holidays, grant applications, Ross recovering some of our specialist markets, Christmas fair, lights, including new lights and locations, vandalism of red metal toilets, wooden rope, uh, uh, barracks, skate park, bluebell play park, ropeball play equipment, installation issues, flooding, CCTV camera, uh, installations, the list can go on. We, councillors, do not see the actions and activities occurring between meetings to ensure the council is operating safely and securely and providing great service to the public at that. So it's not surprising that some issues are overlooked. Neither I nor the clerk made a decision on the matter of poll cards, there's no opportunity to schedule a meeting. Hence the default budget decision was taken. Uh, and now we really need to get back to the agenda item. Uh, you know, it, it is everyone's responsibility, John, not just the clerk or myself.
Can I answer?
Hang on, let's, let's go one at a time. Uh, Councilor Boylan was first.
Sorry, I, yeah, I'd like to answer a couple of those things. Above all, we are here for people's voices and if we silence them, what are we here for? You can talk about play parks, you can talk about Morris dancers, bands in the park, whatever you like, but we are here for these people, they voted us in. Number two, we didn't have a chance to even speak about it on the agenda because the decision was taken on the twenty-third of June, right? So any of us could have put it in as a motion to go on the agenda after that, it wouldn't have been discussed, the decision was made. You just said that nobody had the right to make that decision and then said, so the decision was made. You can't have it both ways. Either a decision was made or it wasn't made. And I don't think hailing back to two thousand and seventeen when three councillors were here, because by the way, eight of councillors have been voted in after that. So to say three councillors have got the responsibility of what it was in two thousand and seventeen is utter rubbish. Everyone on here past two thousand and seventeen has been voted in by the public in order to give the public a voice. And obviously, by what members of the public saying and councillors that have been voted in, everybody was unhappy about it and you have to sit with that decision, Chair.
Councilor Boylan?
Can I suggest, uh, look at the, what is on the agenda and it says to consider if a council vacancy procedure is required. I don't think another procedure or policy is required, all that is required is that we all agree tonight. That if we have any by-elections in the future, any decision or whether we have polling cards or not, which may or may not cost one pound, two pounds, three pounds per electorate, that comes to this council. That's all we need. If we can agree tonight on that, let's agree on it and make it absolutely clear in all of us, the staff and the public, that's what we're going to do in the future once we get a communication from the county council, D E or D E of Ross Town Council, want to spend money on polling cards. You want to spend three, four, five or six thousand pounds on polling cards, bring it to this table. Can we just agree on that?
Well, I think there's more in this conversation.
Uh, yeah, in response to that, um, I'll, I'll go to in a minute to an email that I previously sent the clerk before the, uh, agenda went out, um. I'm quite disappointed, Councilor Barton, by your response there. It didn't really address the situation at all. And, uh, you just listed a lot of stuff trying to, in my opinion, uh, make out that staff are far too busy and that this has been missed. I think that's quite disgraceful. And the staff potentially deserve apology on that. Because it was discussed, there was a meeting had on the twenty-third of June and that decision was made by somebody in this room and that should be made public of who that was. Now, going back to, uh, Councilor Barton's point, I did send an email through suggesting, um, opposite which came from, um, from, uh, uh, other people in the town saying that it should come to the table, that the town councils could always formally have an agenda item that considers the issue of polling cards whenever a prospect of any election arise or by-election arises. So that should always come to this table. So that would be a proposal that I put on there. And a suitable level of earmark reserves is maintained to ensure that sufficient funds are always available to cover the eventuality of a by-election or election, adding to the balance each year to ensure there is full funding available in the event of the above. I also respect that we haven't put the preset up, but hadn't wised into everybody's liking. I don't necessarily agree with that, but we're not talking about that tonight. But if we were to put the preset up, we can include for stuff like this, which is what people in our town want. Because they want to make sure that a vote comes to the table and that it is done properly. Yeah.
I'm, given how, uh, many of us delivered so many leaflets, everybody around this table, I'm a bit mystified by lots of members of the public not knowing that there was an election. I am genuinely surprised. My, um, my longest conversation at the doorstep was actually with a lady who didn't know how to vote because she had an out-of-date passport and an out-of-date driving licence. And it was the clerk's, um, missive that went out that gave me the information that said that, so I went round with the lady and told her, that said that if the photo on the passport was recognizably her, she could still go to a polling station. And she was very happy with that. Um, the other thing I'd like to say is if I had the power to spend six thousand pounds on something, I would buy a bit of play equipment. I wouldn't spend it on polling cards for two, for two council places where most people would have known from the leaflets that we were having an election.
Leaflet. Councilor Boylan?
Um, yeah, I would just like say obviously, only if you looked at a certain party's literature, would you have known that there were going to be no polling cards. So I'd like to ask how that party knew and nobody else was let know.
Absolutely.
In advance of it.
In advance of them getting it printed. Because that was shocking to not let other candidates know.
That's a foul.
Um, electoral services, yeah, but the thing is.
No, no.
Let's go one at a time.
As soon as I found out, I had messaged everybody, all of them, just to make sure they knew what was going on. And that's all we had to do. It's a simple email or, or, I don't know, a message or a message, whatever. It takes two seconds.
Hmm.
Councilor Macabre?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I do want to mention it, but, um, Reynolds Court, for example. I, I went to Reynolds Court five days before the election because that's when we found out. Both people didn't vote. Six of them couldn't vote because they were bedridden and it was too late then to have an emergency proxy. There were six people who couldn't vote and they were very distressed about that.
Shocking.
So I'm, I'm going to try and move the time if we can to try and get, it's too late for the public, I'm afraid.
And we spent standing orders for a sec because he is candidate, so I'll suspend, suspend standing orders.
Yeah, I would agree with that. As a, as a past candidate, I think we would be good to have a second.
So there's a, there's a, a proposal in second just to suspend.
Propose.
In favour of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then all those again?
Not surprised.
It is alright to vote, but it's disgraceful. Genuinely.
Uh, we're in shock, isn't it? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Do it abstaining.
It's taking longer to, to vote, uh, than what it takes.
Um.
He's got a costume thing.
Yeah, he's got a tie.
What did you, did you?
I voted against.
No, it wasn't a costume.
No, I think that, can we just check the votes again because I think that was seven against. Six in favour, seven against, two abstentions.
I did vote.
Who was, who was against again? Just show your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that is six in favour, seven against, two abstentions.
Sorry. There's no dialogue, is it? What are these being made on here?
What I would really like to do is try and find a way forward. So I think we could probably all agree that if there is a by-election in future, that goes on the agenda.
Well, I got the Councilor Boylan's point is valid, I think.
He's my favourite, isn't he?
Yeah, okay, as a, as a vote, yep, okay, Councilor Liston proposed.
Well, can I just be clear here who's putting the proposal forward? Because I had actually previously put this to the clerk and I was asked to discuss it at this meeting and not allow it to previously go on as a motion. So I actually have put this motion before previously.
I second it.
Well, I think Councilor Barton, you seconded this, this meeting, Chair.
Yes, but I thought when you previously done by the card, I was like, not because.
Does it actually match?
Yes, yes, it does. When councillors are, are, are stating about other councillors, what they voted on lots.
Well, you've made it familiar.
Yeah.
Let's try and find a way forward here, we go.
You want to play politics and play.
Councilor Boss. In reference to harmony and brotherly and sisterly, yeah, I'm happy. Uh, councillors have proposed it, as long as he's happy, I second it.
I'm more than happy. If those two motions go through as a proposal, yeah.
Okay, so we've got a, a proposal from councillors, seconded by Councilor Barton. For issues of polling cards, they always go on the agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Boss.
Do I, do I add something to that? Is that even if there isn't a meeting scheduled?
Yep.
That we have an emergency. Yes, we need to make sure it is actually discussed. It isn't a case of just waiting for the next available meeting.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a good point.
You must know, you must know. Um, it's already on the list, so we don't want any problems.
I didn't know, I didn't know you, that it was.
No, can we have, can we have one meeting, please? Uh, absolutely. I know you've proposed it. Uh, the clerk is suggesting that we modify our co-option procedure to include it in that. Uh, are you happy to?
So we can still, we can still have that, uh, motion. That can be agreed, but are we happy to review the co-option? We've currently got a co-option procedure that is an adopted procedure, but it doesn't include a vacancy procedure. So it could be extended to include, so it'd be no additional policies, but it could just extend the co-option procedure to include a vacancy procedure.
Yes.
And we can ask that for the next meeting.
Could we please put in that there won't be a blind vote on co-option then? Um, which I would like put into the policy because I think that if somebody is to be co-opted onto the council, people should know who's voted for, um, for that person because this has been brought up before as well about.
Yeah, that, that would need to change for stand, that's in standing orders, so that would need to change.
Can we ask for it to be put on the agenda then?
Go on the next agenda.
Definitely, thank you.
Uh, okay, so we've got a proposal, Councilor Liston. Uh, seconded.
So the key point that, uh, Councilor Liston wanted was us to actually ensure there are sufficient funds um, in the, in the budget and in micros. So that needs to be part of this, um, vacancy policy as well and part of the motion. Uh, sort of wording.
Um, yeah, just make sure that there is the funds then. Obviously, we've, we've argued many times that, um, it needs to go up, the amount needs to go up and press fit and it's been ignored and it is because things like this, we need to have enough funding in the budget.
Councilor Liston?
Yeah, I'll just say this and then I'll, I'll leave the matter. We still haven't got to the point of who made the decision and the public wants to know.
And I think the public needs.
So whoever made it.
They have the right to know.
Whoever made it, if you don't want to say tonight, that's fine, but I do think that there should be a statement made to the public because they want to know who made that decision.
There's, we'll take a vote on the, on the proposal.
Yeah. Yeah, turn, we're, just turn the volume.
So all those in favour?
And that was for the, the two points that councillor listed go down.
So, uh, I will, if I may, Chair, um, I was leaving this council offices in, after a meeting. I did not know when the meeting occurred. I alwa, I've always believed it was in July, could have been in June, probably around about the tenth of June. It was, and in the corridor meeting, I was just asked about polling cards. So there was no time to actually have a meeting since I thought it was July. And, um, where we had, and I said, we had no choice but to follow the budget decision of no polling cards, I just left, left it. It was definitely not the twenty-third. I was not present at these offices. Um, I was actually in Malvern and my place of work. Um, and that is all recorded, that I was there as that day. Um, furthermore, um, I also gave my apologies on the twenty-fourth because I was busy at work at the, and this, and that's all recorded in the minutes of the meeting, so I wasn't there either. And the other thing is, I never discussed it with anybody. I don't think, and then on the thirty-first, I went into hospital for an operation and I was out for two weeks.
Thanks, councillor. So, Holman, we'd like to move on to the next item now.
Okay.
Conscious time, unconscious.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to get, so you're saying no discussion took place, Julian?
No discussion took place really apart from a corridor comment, wasn't it, as I was leaving.
A clock, a clock.
We didn't, yeah, we had a, a.
We had a conversation, that was all, about, well, probably less than thirty seconds.
I, I don't think it'd take that much longer, we're getting polling cards, that's all new.
I'd like to move on.
I just think the public got right.
Thank you to you, response, councillor Bartram, thank you.
We both got to leave.
Thank you, Julian.
Well, we felt, we felt that it should have been on the agenda, but it wasn't.
He was moving on.
And, and, um, that it, that on the agenda, there was no time for another meeting.
We'd like to move on.
And then, you know, so moved on. And by the way, sorry, by the way, it is the duty of electrical services to actually communicate to all councillors. If it's not Ross Town councillor, doesn't hold.
I don't think it's the issue of.
Okay. We're moving on, we're moving on, we're moving on to committees. I think we've, we've done it. So, so the first item is to consider combinations with subcommittees. So I'm looking particularly at the new councillors to see what, to see what decision.
I, um, have been recommended maybe just to attend a couple of, of the meetings first, um, prior to that, if that's okay. I don't want to make that decision or put myself towards something right now, if that's okay.
So if you would like to attend and participate, we could, uh, you want to influence the committee? Uh, and then you can, you can choose after.
No, don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
But you can't.
I don't.
But you can't.
No, no, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Appoint them to every committee they could form.
Yeah, they could, if they're appointed to all.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
In, in the past, we've suggested all new councillors that come in for a, a by-election, actually get non, uh, get appointed formally to all subcommittees. They don't have to attend all of them.
Yep.
They can give their apologies and that's my recommendation. Then next May, when we decide which committees we possibly want, they can either still retain in a, uh, an active participant of all committee meetings or reduce their workload.
I'm happy with that, yeah, absolutely.
Chair, having attended a couple already, I'd like to put my name for the finance.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah. You're starting?
At the moment.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. James, if I propose, that can be done.
Okay. Anybody second that?
Yeah.
You're second, yeah. Councillor listed, we have to vote, yeah, all in favour?
Yeah.
Do you have a vote on councillor Harrison's subcommittee? That was support, that was support.
So councillor Harrison on all seven committees. Councillor Macalister on financing.
Next one.
I'd like to come off the planning and on to property and finance, please.
Okay, yeah. Are you proposing that?
Please.
Councillor Fowler, all in favour of that?
Um, speaking's open.
This item to receive and note the minutes for the following meetings and approval and recommendations. Uh, quite a few of these, I think we'll try to do the one that we can. So, uh, finance and property subcommittee, uh, to recommend to full council a draft twinning agreement between Rossamoye Town Council and Obrich City Council. Councillor Chris.
I'm happy to propose this, I think we've both gone on so well. Um, I, I think we've, uh, we've agreed that Obrich is a great match and I think we, uh, we have a good twinning agreement in place. It's open and allows, um, the relationship to grow between the two communities. Um, and I would hope it would be something everybody could get behind.
Happy to second.
Seconded by councillor Frey, councillor Utter.
That, that's the fifteen hundred pounds, if it's to be this financial, I would have to come from the general reserves.
Okay. Are you happy to use that as part of the proposal?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Uh, still happy to send it. Take a vote, are all those in favour?
unanimous.
Uh, so the second person from finance and property is, uh, receiving note from the board requesting to make a recommendation to full council that the ten and a half thousand pounds remaining of the CCTV in our reserve, we transfer to general reserve now that the CCTV, CCTV project is completed.
I agree with this.
Councillor, are you happy to propose this?
Yes, doesn't need to be.
Okay.
First note, I'll receive them now.
Would you like to vote on the, to move between you? It all comes out.
Yeah.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll, I'll propose it. Councillor Frey to second, all in favour?
unanimous.
Um, okay, so the third item from finance and property is, uh, to approve expenditure of thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy pounds. Uh, this is for repairs to the front of a town hall.
It is, it's not, it's, I've put a whole thing, it's the fifteen thousand from general reserves costs, so the, the top bit has been.
Okay, so it's, uh, the recommendation is to transfer fifty thousand pounds from general reserves to the property port family in the Ewatt Reserve.
Come on, how could you propose?
What's in proposing and seconded for that? Councillor Frey, and all those in favour? And all those against? Abstentions?
No. I want it, one of them.
Yeah, so moving on to, uh, the CM and T subcommittee. Uh, just to note the minutes for that, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, we've flattened the lessons, the conclusions. Uh, and then, uh, a recommendation to full council, this for amenities, uh, to fund three thousand four hundred and forty, three thousand four hundred and forty-five pounds, uh, for tree work at the prospect. So we have a proposer for this. Councillor Wyndham, I'm looking at you, councillor Wyndham. Councillor Wyndham?
He's proposing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A second to that, councillor Wyndham, all in favour?
Right, unanimous.
Uh, again, from amenities, uh, to recommend to full council to approve the length of ten for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I'd just make an observation at that last, um, vote. Can't be sure that when voting all these floors for the rest of the barrier, we could do the work at the same time, I'm not seeing a bit.
And would avoid. That's already been.
To propose it, yeah, thank you. I'd just like that vote to do the minutes, another good pass.
It can remain some minutes.
Yeah. Otherwise it's going to be extended for.
Okay, so recommending for amenities to approve the length of ten to not to for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, any posers for that one?
Yeah.
Councillor Boylan, uh, seconded by councillor Fowler, all those in favour?
Unanimous.
Uh, and again, from amenities, uh, to approve expenditure of thirty-six thousand pounds, uh, from the property port family in the Ewatt Reserve. This is for repairs to the later on grounds. Um, we have a proposer for that one? Councillor Sett, you're on, and a seconded, councillor Pope, uh, all those in favour?
Louis, you?
I'm abstaining because I wonder why we can't get that funding for it.
Okay.
It's quite an expensive piece of work.
No one's likely to run funding.
I'm abstaining.
And then finally, uh, finance and property committee, uh, recommendation to full council, uh, the installation costs relating to Holmes Road car park enforcement are five thousand pounds to be allocated from the reserve. We have a proposer, councillor Otting proposing, uh, anyone to second this one? Councillor Bartram, and all those in favour?
Okay.
Against?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't. One, two, three, four against, so eleven for, four against. Oh, yeah. Eleven for, four against. Okay.
Uh, okay, so moving on to the working groups.
Just to note as well that the minutes that haven't, although those have been reached, are the amenities subcommittee minutes and the equity subcommittee minutes haven't been circulated, so they can be approved, but the minutes will be on the next meeting as well, just because they haven't circulated, yeah.
Uh, okay, so, uh, Councillor, it's the ultimate, it's not here to, uh, private work to do, councillor Boylan, you've got.
Yeah, can I, sorry, can I just say, um, obviously councillor Chiyoti isn't here again, um, to comment on the climate and eco emergency, but since we had a vote on whether it should be shut down, I think four times ago, nothing has been done. Councillor Chiyoti hasn't been here, nothing's moving forward, nothing to mind has ever been done with the climate and eco emergency. Um, I was really disappointed that a summer buzz programme was shut down on the same day as the climate and eco emergency was kept alive by various councillors, even though nobody's ever done anything about it. And summer buzz was a very successful, um, thing throughout the summer, yeah, it was shut down. So I'd like to ask if we can shut down the climate and eco emergencies, it can't be that much of an emergency, things that no one ever talks about, yeah.
We'd have to go on the agenda for next time.
Okay.
Chair, it was proposed in last week. We, we did have a couple of meetings, but, um, the problem was a lack of funding that was available in our team. It's always been a problem, there's been no funded outreach to us. That is always the problem, it's the point that we needed to allocate funding to the highway.
The skate park, councillor Driscoll?
Yeah, I had a meeting today with, uh, Larnador, sort of community development officer, and Andrew Houston, yeah, who has, he was a section one oh six projects officer. Um, and basically what happened, he, he finished at the end of June and there wasn't a, character council didn't take on a new officer. So it's disappointing, um, but we've effectively lost three months of the project time while they found a replacement for Andrew. But they have now found a replacement. There's a guy called Nigel Kosch who's, um, taken over. Uh, he's, he's going to be, uh, beginning stakeholder engagement now with Andrew, sort of getting back up to speed over the next week. And Ross Town council are going to be con, Ross Town council are going to be contacted this week again as part of that stakeholder engagement. So things are starting to ramp up again, which is great and hopefully that means, um, we start to see some things new and the company that's been contracted to do the landscape architects will begin to get some dates in the diary to talk to local schools, et cetera, I would have thought, over the coming months. Um, but, yeah, I know there's also been a date put in the diary, a couple of ideas with, um, with Carla and they've been circulated to a few councillors to look at the footprint of skate park to start the ball rolling on, uh, firstly reinstating police that, um, is, is, needs to be, for the existing footprint and for starting negotiations on the larger footprint that needs to be discussed for the new skate park and pump track. So, yeah, we've been pushing, finding that they've got somebody on board, hopefully we can see some movement over the next, the next month or so.
Are we going to have a good development plan?
That's nothing to worry about. Right. That could ask the, uh, crowd to ask the deputy to actually, in accordance with Herford's charter, it identifies funding or support to the review of neighborhood development plans. I know, um, Herfordshire actually refused to put aside any funding, but I would like, um, allow the deputy now to use that charter, see whether or not we can get formal funding. We need funding in order to have the professional support and help in the, in reviewing to evidence of development.
So employee documentation, expect that's through.
Um, we've had our final meeting, it's in the process as well.
Could we, could we whisper, please, I struggle to hear sometimes. So.
But, yeah, we've had our final meeting, we've agreed everything, it's in the process of being, which is, we're going to lose to bring it back first around and then. Um, yeah.
And then you again, who will turn in places?
I'm in the process of approaching people, was in queue to get a, a realistic figure for a design build to bring them to F and P, to put into the budget in next year.
Uh, Ukraine to win, councillor Driscoll?
Obviously tonight's, you step forward, but now we need to circulate, um, an email to convene another meeting or to have an online meeting to look at. I know, um, Katie Neil is going to go out to Ukraine in, in a couple of weeks' time potentially, um, and maybe able to take a, a copy of the, the twinning agreement out to Obrich, actually hand it over physically to the mayor, which would be fantastic, reach the show willing, which is great that you're looking to doing that. Um, but I think it would also be good to try and organize a team meeting between the mayor, um, of Obrich and, and so, uh, then, um, to have a formal online, um, signing if, if possible. If that could coincide with the time when Neil and Katie are out there, all the better, but we will look at diaries and see where that takes us. And then I, I think that's going to be the priority to get those timelines sorted.
Okay, so next.
Just comment on the, uh, the council places, uh, because it's, it's, it's time we get to bring stuff up on these. Um, I had shown interest on, uh, on, uh, sharing my knowledge on that, that still stands. Um, so if there can be of any help, that would be great, um, providing they're not at work. Um, also, when the plans are done, I wonder perhaps whether we could, although we have a connection at the minute with, um, the Horizon Centre, whether we could actually put it past some of the people that might actually use it, um, so we can get their feedback on it because, uh, you know, some of the changing places that can be used with, with people that need them, actually they're not that user friendly, so, uh, it would be good to go through that first.
I don't know who I'm talking to, has pretty changing, because this is in municipal building.
That's absolutely fine. Again, once they're finished in the finished stage, they're not that user friendly. You can fit a bathroom, you can fit a changing place, but unless you actually physically use it on a daily basis, you don't understand how to use it. I get that they're professionals, but sometimes the professional touch isn't the right touch. Yeah.
Uh, okay, so next item is mayor's announcements. Um, I've written the list, uh, I'll try to go as quick as we can. On the seventeenth of July, I attended a sea cadet inspection alongside members of Royal Navy. On the twentieth of July, I did a charity collection of ones in the park. Twenty-sixth of July, uh, I attended the opening services of the three choirs festival at Royal Navy. On the twenty-seventh of July, I attended a flag raising event to commemorate the career in for Arvestis at Market House. On the fourth of August, I had breakfast with the Royal Legion Ross branch at Royal. Uh, I had so much needed time off on holiday. Legion Ross branch at Royal. I had so much needed time off on holiday. On the twenty fourth of August, I attended a prize giving ceremony at the Ross Regatta at the Rowing Club. And then on the twenty fifth of August, I did Drench the Dell's charity event in the stocks at Market House. On the seventh of September, yesterday, I attended the mayor at Monmouth's civic service. I've got a full diary for September as well. And then in October, I'm planning a charity pub quiz, which I'll publish details of soon, as many people as possible can attend that.
Very disappointed you didn't have your face painted.
Great picture.
Yeah, yes, and responsible. For those who haven't seen the picture on Facebook, there is a picture of me sitting on a stone wall next to the chair of Monmouthshire County Council, and he's got his face painted as a tiger. And he did it as a death in exchange for a donation to his party. And so, very similar. There is.
Yeah, probably quite a few bits, but I'll go through them as quickly as possible. So the West Mercia PCC newsletter has been circulated on the twenty fifth of July and twenty ninth of August to all members. Also, the notes from the meeting with the chief executive and leader of Heritage Council have been circulated. There was upstream prevention events details circulated on thirty first July, as well as a consultation on the Herefordshire cycling, wheeling and walking plan. We do now have a card payment link set up for anybody wanting to pay for town council services, that we have a link for. So there isn't a card device, but we have a link where you can pay by card, either through the office or if we've got it on a tablet, et cetera. We've got the links here if anybody needs them. The Heritage Council's charter with town and parish councils has now been launched and circulated to everybody and staff on the eighth of August. Flood risk management and drainage contacts at Heritage Council have been updated and circulated to all councillors on thirty first July. Details of river stakeholder engagement webinar were circulated for climate and eco emergency working group members on the eighteenth of August. We've had a couple of complimentary emails about, we had one saying, congratulations to all those responsible for the lovely Ross-on-Wye. My husband and I have spent a lovely few days in the area. I've been very impressed by how well that taster is, beautiful hanging baskets, no litter, free public conveniences, cheaply priced car parks. We really enjoyed it and want to write and thank all those who worked so hard keeping it lovely for all, to appreciate people so friendly and helpful too. And another one to say, thank you for the wonderful days you've put on over the summer. My children thoroughly enjoyed them both. I think the activities live were brilliant and suited a range of ages, so thank you for your hard work. Herefordshire Council's position on flags has been circulated. The local government pay award for twenty five, twenty six has now been finalized and implemented. If any councillors who haven't been in touch with Athalia about stewarding for the outdoor cinema event on Friday evening, please can you let me know if you might be able to help so that Athalia can get in touch. Sitton's advice outreach at the hub launched on Friday the fifth of September, so that's going to be one session a month with appointments booked in advance. The external audit has now been finalized and closed all satisfactorily with no matters to report. Market House project final grant claim for eleven thousand two hundred and seventy eight pounds has now been authorized for payment and the end of the defect period is coming up, so we're having a meeting with contractors and the architects on the twenty fifth of September to finalize that. There's further vandalism has happened at Red Meadow toilets last weekend. In the gent's toilet this time, it has been reported to the police. The, it was some panels have been removed, so that has, the amenities team have managed to repair it. But obviously, it's unfortunate that that's another incident of vandalism at the toilets. Council workshops, I have emailed everyone out a reminder about the, this Wednesday evening and this Saturday morning about the council workshops taking place. So if everybody who hasn't responded to me can confirm if they're able to attend, as soon as possible, please. Council profiles for the website, any councillors who haven't sent a profile just about them to go on the website, please get in touch with yours so that they can all be uploaded to the new website. The new website should be launched, hopefully by October. It's all still being set up and F and P have agreed the colour scheme now, so that should be ready to go within the next couple of weeks. And that will have, we're trialling a method of not having the, so having as much meeting documentation publicly available on the new website to enable it. The whole website will be to meet the accessibility guidelines, so that should be good to go by first of all. Rochambeau Street and Borth Street will be serviced in June, September, which has already been mentioned. Skate park meeting, those who are on the working group, I've emailed a couple of possible dates. Thank you to those who have come back to me already. If you haven't, please can you let me know which times you're able to attend so I can get it arranged. And then there is a parish flood plan workshop that has been emailed to us by Herefordshire Council. They're doing a workshop in, there's one in Hereford, one in Lampster, for anybody wanting to attend at a pilot, participating in a pilot exercise to develop a parish flood plan. So if anybody is interested, let me know and I can give you the information on that. And finally, we received the email today just to say that with regret, the public announced that just Ken passed away last night, Lambden Bridge has not been activated and the council has decided whether to fly the flag at half past. And they'd like to let know, would you like the flag playing at half past?
Yes.
So we'll get that arranged.
Vote on it, make it official.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, you mentioned the cycling and walking consultation. Is that going through planning and development committee?
I think it was an, it was one for individuals to respond to rather than the council. I'll bet that.
The LC working strategy, I'm going to script it tomorrow, it's going to script it tomorrow, the Heritage Council.
Oh, so it's closed?
It's closed.
Okay.
But what it did have, we extended the period for the performance. It did happen before.
Councillor.
I'm not proposing that we reinstate charges on the toilets, so please know on this quorum. But since we've removed the charges on the toilets, it seems like that damage has increased quite dramatically. I'd be quite interested to know what the full costs are of the damage caused on the toilets since we've removed the charges on the toilets, if possible, by the relevant committee. Somebody?
Yeah.
Obviously not far to, that man's very busy.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so moving on to finance, I think an expenditure for twenty four, twenty six. Do you have any voting weight related to that? Make comments on that. That's the boiler.
I'd just like to make sure there's nothing budget following costs.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
I'd just like to make sure there's nothing budget following costs. If we have another election.
There is nothing in the election costs, which is forty five, forty, which is in the first page, halfway down. It's only four thousand pounds for the election costs. That would probably be more than, like in those two ward elections, probably will be consumed. So any further expenditure would have to come from general reserves.
That's fine.
Okay, so going on to council payment. Receiving approval. Councillor. Yep, proposing. We're going to pay.
Who was the second this time?
That was me.
Oh, thanks.
So to receive the notice as a payment's made. I think there is, they're on the website, yep.
We need to vote on this.
No, do you?
Yeah, it's just no two, no two.
And then item three is to consider giving notice to Realta Software to cease its sales budget.
I was hoping to have had, we've been trying to rectify some issues we've been having with it, and they've only just come back to me today to suggest a meeting to discuss them. We would need to give six months' notice, which is right on this agenda, but we haven't had the meeting with them to try and resolve it as yet, due to the delay in them responding. So I don't.
It's not to defer.
Can I suggest we give them this anyway, so if they satisfactory response, we would draw that, or else we just pay continuing payment for someone that we don't really use?
Well, it's just the fact it's so admin heavy. When we've spoken to them before, they've said that there's no way of making it less onerous. But, I mean, if they can't, then it's far too much work for what, the work outweighs the benefits. So we're trying to, if they can come up with a solution to make it less user friendly, then we'd be happy to carry on with it. But as it stands, it just takes too much time and wastes too much paper.
We need to vote.
If, if, yeah.
I propose we give the six months' notice anyway. We can always withdraw it.
Yep.
If it becomes satisfactory.
Okay, I'd like to second.
Councillor. All those in favour?
I'm abstaining on that. Have anything about that?
Okay, that's fourteen, four and one abstain.
And once again, budget for twenty six, twenty seven, is to receive the budget consultation and the consultation results. Councillor.
Well, we're seeing there's approximately seventy two replies to budget consultation. I'm really asking for all committees to really take that into consideration when they're coming up for redoing their budgets. And in light of things, I really want all councillors to participate in the budget and actually understand what's going on and not just leave it to me, please. And the other thing is, is to really think about what preset we want to charge on that. Traditionally, we've always been in line with Herefordshire County Council, which is three percent. Once we introduced it to the five percent because of the cost of living, et cetera, and we just couldn't alter to that. And we have delivered zero, left a zero percent one year as well, as we spent our reserves. I would like to try and move it towards a balanced budget, because I think, as you heard tonight, we're spending quite a lot of our reserves. So we are coming to the end of that. However, we are very successful in getting grants in that has reduced the deficit at the end of each year.
Okay, so the next item is a motion from councillor Coca. So before you introduce this, I'm just happy that you've proposed this motion and we can second this motion and so it can be discussed. Councillor Setfield, have to second yet? Okay, councillor Coca, over to you.
Yeah, so this, obviously there was some discussions on the election, sorry, the election of the mayor. And I have a good friend, Anna Raphael, who's former mayor of Evesham, and her son is actually the current mayor of Evesham. And I was reading her book, and towards the end, she talks about how the Evesham council deal with this. And I rang her up and we had a long conversation. I've actually circulated the email that she responded to. And I, I think the thing I'm trying to do is to completely remove any bias to any group, whoever they are. I personally very strongly feel that the town council shouldn't be political. And this way is done on seniority. They, when somebody is elected to the council, they go on this list and literally you list all the names of the councillors, so their seniority comes on. Now, if you've, you go to the one at the top and you ask them if they'd like to be mayor, and if they say yes, that's fine, they take the mayor. They then have the option of doing a second year if they so wish. Regardless of that, you then just literally move down the list. Would you like to do it? Yes, no, and you move down. And therefore, absolutely anybody gets, there are a few little bits and pieces, like you have to have served for five years, one, two elections at least. And I'm not saying I have all the answers. I'm not even saying that that needs to be the one that I'm suggesting proposing as the only alternative. I'm merely suggesting we should look at a new system that does not mean that any group of people can potentially band together to make a choice that is theoretically, or not theoretically, may be or may not be to their advantage. It's absolutely fair. All independents, everybody gets a fair chance. And that seems to be quite a good way to do it.
Anybody else? Councillor Wyndham?
Out of interest, having you remind the Conservatives how the most seats on the council.
Well, I would admit, we did have the same system. I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting, and I never have suggested, anything was actually done wrong, the last one. I make that perfectly clear. I've never said anybody did anything wrong. I'm just suggesting that because some members of the public felt it was not right, I'm merely suggesting that we look at an alternative method. And there may be other methods. This was just one that I found out about.
Thank you.
I gather Hereford do it in seniority, and then they, if there are a number of councillors who've got the same number of years of service, they just put names in a hat. I think that idea is lovely.
I think that's fine. I think Evesham do it by the number of votes that the person got, if several people are elected on the same day. But it doesn't matter, we could make that decision, it's the same principle.
Councillor Boiler, first then.
Yeah, I don't agree with mayors having a second term, but apart from that, I think to run in seniority is the most sensible idea. And also, like you say, it goes across party. I don't think it matters what the Conservatives did. We've only got two Conservatives on the council now, and I think only one that was serving back then. So again, we're going back to what was done historically. We want to bring the council in to what the public want and into being modern. And I think actually, seniority is a good way of doing it. We also spoke about whether there could be a way of the public having a say. I know the public cannot vote who is the mayor, but actually you could have a public poll and put forward three people and then do that in seniority. I think that more and more and more, we're taking the power off of the public, and I think the public needs to have power back.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the seniority, I did question that, and I thought about it quite, quite some detail in my head. The only concern I have with that is it does enter another level of, you know, who can, can't be mayor.
Yep.
But it's a fantastic experience, even in lockdown. It's a fantastic experience. You know, and if I get to hang around a long time in a senior position, then hopefully I could be mayor again where I'm not in lockdown and just have to do some more work. Well, yeah, technically, yeah. But some people might only do one term, and then that would discount them from the potential of being a mayor, which I don't think should be taken away from somebody. For instance, say myself, now having a young family, that counts. At the time, I go, actually, you know, this is a bit much for me. I'm going to stand down after that term. I'm not going to, I'm not suggesting that. I'm hopefully going to be here a lot longer, if I get re-elected, of course. But yeah, I think they should still have that chance in their first term if they can. So I would probably look at saying, running at least a year in office, so you get used to how the council works, you know, the ins and outs of it, what is, what isn't, the rules, the regs and such like. Five years, I think maybe is a bit much.
I would just say that I'm not suggesting we make a decision of the details tonight. I'm suggesting that we, we.
Of course.
Consider the option to change.
Okay.
Don't suggest we, we can, according to our standing order, set up an advisory committee. I suggest we do that. I suggest that the proposal, the motion becomes a chair of that. And that advisory committee could make on fire as of Evesham, Hereford, Leamster, Luton, Ludlow, whoever you like. Um, to see what systems they draw. But if you're going to go by seniority, be careful what you wish for.
Hmm. That's lovely.
Well, they might have to have a rule that the somebody who's already served has to go to the bottom of the list.
Anyway, I propose that we set up an advisory committee.
I would second that.
Yep.
For those on there.
And councillor. Is all those in favour of establishing an advisory committee with councillor Coker as its convenor? Are there any in favour?
None.
I would also be happy to be part of that volume committee.
And I'm.
Councillor, is an advisory committee different to a working group? It's all working.
Yes.
But the same.
Well.
Does any of us have an advisory committee?
He could be in the advisory committee.
Group of working councillors and advisory committee.
Yes. More deeply when they're working through it.
Who'd like to do a majority of the process?
Yes.
Excellent. I was going to say that. And you.
Like you said, that was it as well.
Absolutely.
Everybody would like to be on that group, hold that for me.
Yeah, the branch of this.
Louis.
Everybody on it.
Anyone not on to me?
But councillor, councillor Lister, councillor Coker, obviously, councillor Sark, councillor McBoy and councillor Power. Oh, and councillor Boylan. And will you drop some terms of reference to come to your next meeting in the group?
I will do my best to. I am horrendously busy at the moment, but I will do my best to.
And will that, are you happy? So will that sit under management?
I would, I would suggest that probably the next meeting is a bit too soon because going around with a lot of the other councillors to gain information, I was probably too late to the next one.
I think.
So November.
Yeah. Okay.
Twenty-two.
Okay, health and safety.
Um, no access to any images, please, for the talk.
Okay, so next item is the motion listed adjourned for the meeting of May and the ninth of June. We recommend documents that have been made outstanding on. Do you have a school on this one, please?
Well, I was going to say it's all been discussed and agreed, but obviously now there's been a request to review it again.
Can I, can I suggest that we actually adopt this one? Uh, and then we can always review it again and then when further amendments come, we can present it again.
Okay.
I wonder if, um, the, the event at the marketplace might be better if it's just the first Saturday of the month.
And I'd like to go in audience. Oh, sorry. Sorry for standing on the door.
Sorry, I've gone a bit spazied in.
Councillor Liston.
Yeah, oh, there needs to be a change of wording in this because it's incorrect. It says the council should consider what, if any, action to take against him. Yeah, I don't think it should be against him. That's.
Where, which bit was?
Uh, on section D, point C, point C, section D. It's not vague, is it? Uh, oh, sorry. Uh, one, page one. Yes, page one. It's in the highlighted section.
Oh, that, yeah, that's, that's.
We can't change.
No, no, because it's in bold. We're not allowed to change it.
Okay, but then I can't accept these.
No, I agree.
It's there, not in the senior, that clarifies that simply gender specific pronouns are gender relevant.
They shouldn't be gendered, they're full stop.
Can't say I've seen that, but.
Technically, incorrectly, even of a statement.
It says at the top here, they've also changed the language and documented gender neutral terms for line of their policy visibility and respect reject.
Down the bottom.
Very tall, yeah.
Change the neutral. So in the current, so in the current, so in the new document, so it says draft and next model standing orders that are in bold type contain legal and statutory requirements. It is recommended that councils adopt them without changing them or their meaning. Model standing orders not in bold designed to help councils operate effectively, but they do not contain statutory requirements. They may be adopted as drafted or amended to suit the council needs. It is now spewed that all model standing orders will generally be suitable for councils. Some wording has been amended to reflect this town council's customs and practice. But for convenience, the word council is used in model standing orders and unless the context suggests otherwise, including non-councilal, it's not going to be that much, but.
Yeah, councillor Wyndham first. No, you did have, okay, sorry.
No, of course.
I was, yeah, oh, I actually, I did have a point, so maybe I should have. The, it's, I just noticed that when Carla read that bit out, it is recommended that councils do not change this. It doesn't say in car. Surely we can stick he, she in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think that could say them.
Is that the only place?
Oh, no, that's what I was just thinking.
No, I said you want to pick up on, but I'm sure this is.
Councillor isn't.
When we, when we need to adopt that, that, uh, I'm not saying that we can't change it to the state, even if it's time to actually do. But there are some key financial parts in there that we need to adopt. We've adopted the financial regulations there. We're at risk of being unlawful by not, uh, adopting these. I'm also wary of changing anything that's involved because all the stuff in bold would have been tested. Uh, the court of law and, um, uh, and you change one word, even if it's to do he, she, or make a general new. It means that that, that case law will be retested. There, so I do, I, I do suggest we don't do that. I understand, uh, that this has been on the table, um, uh, for some time. So we adopt this and then if we wish to have things changed, we can then have it changed in the meantime. But at least we would have had to start from, um, a clear, clear legal requirement of having, having them updated.
Councillor.
Um, I totally disagree with councillor Upton. I understand what you're saying, but actually I think it's really important. I think if anything, there should be, as councillor O'Driscoll would say, a task and finish group to go through this document and to make sure that everybody is happy because actually this makes an awful lot of difference to councillors. Um, if, if you put it through, I, I will vote against it and I'm not happy. Um, not happy with some of it and I, I think I understand what you're saying about it. Um, you know, I don't think changing a word, he or she would actually, um, need taking back to court, um, and that it make it unlawful. I, I, I totally disagree. I totally disagree. Um, actually pronouns would not change the standing in the court of law at all, councillor Upton, I've studied all. Um, so I do disagree. Thank you. Um, but I just think it's a very important document and I think really we need to go through it thoroughly and understand what it means for each of us, in my view.
I would like us to adopt a bit of common sense. That's all I've got to say.
Councillor Liston?
Yeah, there's a couple of places in there which definitely incorrect. Um, maybe we should challenge that and be a council ahead of the time perhaps. And challenge it and say, hang on, this is one, because there is ten in there, there is chairperson. I know some people disagree and some people agree with it, but we need, we need to be showing that we are, we are making change. Um, also there is parts in there which do concern me and it still concerns me in there about how the council can make a decision. It might only be a recommendation, but the recommendations can be taken and random. Um, and although I was moderately happy to, uh, to agree it on the last meeting, I've now read the document before with the changes in it and I'm, I'm not happy with a number of sections in there, so, uh, I, I shall move forward.
Okay, so, so there is an item in here that, um, the word approach, the use of the word he is being demeaning, she. Where's that?
In the actual standing order, I was going to say, this is just a bit spiritual. The changes, so it is now adopted.
But again, she, still not.
I'm going councillor Boylan, I think we'll move to.
Yeah, under, I, I'd just like to say, under the rules of debate that are in here, we've debated half of what we did tonight. And I think actually, because the council is made up of some quite distinct groups where there is no dialect between council meetings. Our council meetings need to have robust, um, discussions within them. And I think standing by the rules of debate on this actually takes away the debate in a meeting and therefore takes away any democracy that councillors in a minor party might feel that they have.
Councillor, is that one point?
So, so, so all of these, including the debate, are on their existing standing orders.
I, I understand that.
Uh, on that. It has always been a prerogative of the chair of any meetings, whether or not to enforce or not enforce standing orders. And these are written, so all our meetings try to last no more than two, two hours on there. So those are the rules being in there. So no one person, um, can, uh, uh, take over a, a, a particular meeting by continuously going down in the system, writing, replying and all, all of that sort of thing. But there are in there for, for a reason. We have not enforced this for a long time. And, and certainly for the, uh, not as far as I, I, I'm aware that we've actually physically enforced people to only speak one on, uh, once on one, any one topic. I know the chair has drawn things to a close, but, um, whether we approve this or not, our existing ones still have all of this in. So I'm only suggesting that we approve this one and have a working group to have a task and finish on particular things, have it more in depth. I'm just worried that our financial regulations and our standing orders are not in line with each other. And I was just wondering, was the clerk can comment on that?
I would say that that is an issue, that the, the financial aspect of it, because as you say, they're not in line. And this has been in draft since the annual meetings. There's been, it's been on the agenda and discussed at meetings previous to this. There were issues regarding the code of conduct complaint section, which we then had an agenda item to discuss. So, uh, it has been on several meetings up until now. I would like to get the financial regulations in line with standing orders because that is a potential issue.
So I, I think we've heard quite a bit on this and I think I'm going to move to a vote and propose.
But that actually proves our point. That actually proves our point. We still haven't had discussion. And this proves our point that a chair will always draw the, the conversation to a close. And I'm not being rude, but councillor Upton there spoke for a good seven, eight minutes over something, a lot of things actually that were completely irrelevant to what we were discussing and went off on a, on an utter tangent. And yet when other councillors try to put their hand up to discuss something that we're discussing, you draw it to a close. That is why I absolutely do not agree with these standing orders. And we've heard enough times, you've had one bite at the cherry. We've heard enough times as people that are not majority of this council that we've discussed enough once, the majority of the council have had their discussion. It is not going to happen anymore.
So I'm, I'm proposing that, that we adopt the standing. Uh, with a, a possible future working group to see whether we can, uh, improve the wording. Um, but I think, I think adopting the financial section of it is important to be in line. Uh, otherwise there's, there's an.
Sorry, but if this was already on there anyway, shouldn't, shouldn't it be?
The financial bit will still be in line then.
They've, they've changed, haven't they? The financial section's changed.
Because if they just.
So I'm, I'm. If you want to pick for a working group in the future to, to change them, they're, they're more than welcome to bring that back to council.
Not saying that.
So if someone's having a, having to move to a vote.
I'll say.
Councillor Boylan, uh, all those happy?
It's not, it's not.
Should it be not? What was the way to do that?
We need to find out.
Seven in favour.
All those again, take.
Three, four, five again.
There's more to it than that, Louis. Then Simon's.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. This is what lies on, that's what they're on.
Yeah, yes, we are, but it doesn't make them right, does it?
So, so, so.
Just trying to count. Councillor Liston.
Oh.
Councillor Liston.
That's why I'm on, the debate is important. This is in favour of you.
I'm not saying that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Strong. We're just going to count the votes on this one.
Yeah, in favour, can. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight in favour, against. One, two, three, four, five against. And so. Have we got an exception?
Can you see me? I, I would have voted for it if the proposal had been what you said, but then didn't put in a proposal that we accept it because of the financial regulation, subject to a, a further.
Yes.
So that was not what the proposal was, so, so I abstained.
Abstained, one abstention. So. So that is just to adopt the amended standing orders as is. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Can I suggest that, or propose for the working group that those councillors wish to review the standing orders? It's, it's undertaken.
It's on the agenda, so we'll bring that to the next meeting.
This point is sent right to us. It's very, it's very.
Councillor, uh, councillor Liston, you led the task and finish group. Do you want to feedback for us?
Uh, yeah, there's been a report that has been circulated. Um, all the information is in there. I was asked to give some stats. Um, I wasn't going to, but we passed the stats of who was involved. Um, seven councillors were involved in, in that. Um, pretty shooting, interesting coming to the meeting. Two gave apologies, one attended. Um, and, uh, we are with that information there. That came from those, those seven people and a great deal of that. Um, I did seek approval, um, uh, that now councillor had, uh, could come along, um, and, uh, it was, it was, I thought it was okay. A lot of positive information came from that, um, from Gloucestershire council. And so some of that was based on, on, on that. Um, so it's a very good discussion to be had. Um, as well as those people that replied to the email, there's really valid points in those as well. So thanks to everybody that responded. Um, so I'm assuming you've all read the document, so it, it's open to change, I guess, isn't it? Um, but.
Yeah. Councillor Pope, you.
Councillor Pope, you.
Can I pretend that I didn't say that earlier intervention? Um, I wondered if it was more realistic to have, um, once a month at the market house. Because we're all very busy people and we need to guarantee that it will happen regularly. And maybe the, the idea of the, was it the third Saturday?
First and third.
Yeah, I'm not that good at counting, but you know, I wonder, I just wondered if once a month we might make more of an impact between all of us doing it.
But the, the weekly surgeries would continue.
Have you read the report, councillor Stark?
Yes, I'm just preparing that for this meeting.
Yes, it's the same, the weekly reports will. We've, we've sent minor adjustments.
Send it to my personal.
It's a minor adjustment.
I feel in quite a lot.
I, I thought it was a document, um, I, I'm, I'm entirely, I think it's, it's very, it seems to be a hybrid book.
I did, um, I, I, I wondered, I think I, I suggested the idea was offering online meetings as well.
I wondered if that had been discussed or might have discounted it.
Uh, yeah, it wa, it was discussed, um, and it was discounted in the terms of that potentially we would have to do it via the link in here. Um, on, on the official council, council link, um, and that it could be, um, difficult to book this from out. With, with prior meetings, but that can absolutely be added in, no, no problem at all. Um, I think it's a good idea. Yes, it does say in the, I think I did put in the report though, that it can be, if someone comes to the meeting and or requests it. You can set up that as an individual councillor, or it can be directed to the ward councillor or another, uh, member of that ward. Uh, that might be relevant to that question. I think they just put it in there.
It does happen.
It, yeah, it does say. If it doesn't, I apologize. Yes, it can be.
Councillor Boyd.
Yeah, that actually brings me, the, the one thing that I agree with is, um, I do think two town councillors. Should always be there because a constituent has brought something to me this week. Um, that they went to see a town councillor that was in the library. And as they were given misinformation about why one of the staff had left. Which was quite worrying. I will speak to a clerk about it afterwards, but, um. I do think that people have to bear in mind when they're councillors, um. They are still councillors when they're in the library. There shouldn't be room for idle gossip or speculation. Especially about staff and even work in previous or whatever to members of the public, um. That's what a constituent had brought to me. Obviously that councillor was on their own, um, and I think it wound up a bit. She said she said, but, um, I think to have two councillors. Is a much more, um, sensible thing from, you know, that I've said about safety before anyway. So I think for everybody's, um, protection, there should be two councillors.
That's my start.
Um, well, if you look at the operation of the surgeries for the past few years. There has only been a, a minimum number of councils willing to do them. I mean, I've certainly done three or four recently and we're probably doing another one when there's a gap. I can understand that some councillors will want to meet constituents doubled up. But I'm quite happy to continue to meet constituents on my own. I have to deal with them as ward councillor on my own. Most of my case law doesn't come through surgeries. It comes through telephone, through email and through the office. The surgeries to me are a useful add-on. I do get references from other councillors as ward councillor, which I deal with. And, um, as far as I'm concerned, yes, if you want to double up, yes, but there will be a capacity issue there. There will be a commitment issue. And what's important to me is that the surgery should be staffed so that it do actually happen. Every Saturday as we agreed to, um, at the library. That's my only concern.
Um, so yeah, two points and then I'll, I'll leave it there. Um. On the point again, I raise it every single time when this is brought up. Yes, some councillors do not put their names down, but this is why we're at this point for that very reason. So please don't make that what sounds like a dig at other people because that's reasons why they don't do that.
See, it's a capacity issue.
But, but that, there's a reason why that is. That's why we're here. That's why we're here. So it's really positive that we've got to this point. Um, second of all, apologies, that wording isn't in there. Um, I thought it was, but it isn't. It just says to book an appointment at a convenient time, provide details of the councillor, to the ward councillor. So that absolutely can be added in. I think that's a good idea. Um, what was the other point? Oh, one of the things that came up, which was felt really important, and we know councillor Bartram does this already. And I've seen him roaming around the, uh, the, uh, library, talking to everybody, which is quite nice to, to see. Um, is that not just to sit in that back room, because it is quite lonely in there. Um, and to make it an important point, which councillor Bartram does, is to be outside. But it was thought that maybe if there could be a little bit of a table on the left hand side, somewhere near that coffee machine or on the other side, where we had maybe the banner out. Saying, so maybe we can invest into a second one, saying that's where your councillor is. And if you want to then go into that meeting room, you have the ability to do that. If not, you can just sit out in the open and everybody can see you. That was, that was felt important from everybody.
Yeah, there's, that, that area was possible by the books machine, but there's also a little area as you, as you go into the right. There's a little leather settee next to two.
Yeah, the, the problem with that is that the computers are, are for private space. So it would, it would be seen as a, as a, a not possible by the councillor, uh, the.
All the times I've done it, there's never been anybody using those computers.
That, that's fine, but one time there might be. And they might not go there because there's people.
And then you go, I'm going down backwards.
I propose you, someone needs to prepare thirty minutes.
Yeah.
That's the window.
Going to have to make my apologies. I've got to be up at four tomorrow morning. I propose thirty minutes, just a second.
I'll second.
Is that okay?
I think you've done a well. Can I extend it first, please? All those in favour?
No. Second point, are, are we actually voting on this tonight as a motion? I believe so, yeah. Because if we're going to change stuff around, then, then we need to get a wording. I mean, I'm happy with it as, as, as a working programme. In, in the email, I think I did, I did say that we should technically adopt this next year. Um, but why not start it sooner if we can get it ironed out?
Councillor Bartram.
I can't believe what? Few years ago, it was nothing to do with the town council. Can we go back to that situation? I mean, we're spending so much time. How, where are we going to have it? Where are we going to do it? But, but just, yeah, but anyway, thank you, councillor Liston. I apologize if I couldn't get back to you. I couldn't get back to you because my email was already going to the town council. So that's what I can get, your email a few days ago. I can't support it as it is because you're proposing abolition, library surgeries, which you can go.
No, we're not.
That is not, that is not.
We're not, no, we're not. They're continuing.
I can have them run mid September and what they can.
For the first and the first, but it's just a recommended, they're going to do the first. Library, the libraries will still continue.
All year round. Right. So are we, are we, are we proposing, um, library on the Saturday, every Saturday? And then are we happy with councillor Pope's suggestion? A stall at the market once a month or do we want twice a month? So I think once is, is probably easier because it's.
Start with once a month, yes. Start with once a month, yeah. Have you?
Yeah, I agree with one, one to month and then we can review it next year.
Okay, well, actually no, the end. Are you happy to propose this, councillor Liston?
Oh, yes, yes.
And a second, uh? Councillor, all those in favour?
Thank you, unanimous.
Okay, so the next item is, um, memberings in the final mentions for this year.
No, just, sorry, who seconded the? Thank you.
Uh, we received an email about the remembrance schedule for this year.
Yes, so it was put on the agenda just because when it was April, I was asked to include an agenda item in September just to confirm. And obviously there were, there were discussions in April. It's just. If there was anything further, because I was asked to include that, that meeting and the agenda item for September.
And councillor Boyd.
Yeah, the item was asked to be put on the agenda. To, um, because obviously last Honesty's Day, there was quite a lot of upset. It felt very politics heavy, upper, um, spec. Um, I would like to go as the unified council, um. So.
Yeah.
It's in there.
Councillor Liston.
I was going to say, it's in there, but I've also spoken to the church and they brought it up, it was a bit of a. And, uh, no, not just, uh, a bit of a, you know, but, but I asked, I asked.
Councillor Sedgefield.
Yeah, we normally meet, I don't know, we live when they have the different trees. We did last time, don't we? Is it a garden room or something in the world?
Yeah, we meet in the.
That's what we usually do, is we all with me in there and then go up to the, uh, and, and march up. To the, um, the warriors.
So happy with the arrangements.
The speed one, yeah.
Can we? Yep. Okay, so no, no further action on that.
No, yeah, I know all that.
Um, well, I'd hope to have a bit more of an update than I have got, so. Um, basically, they've sent an email when I asked for an update, they sent an email saying that the designers are finalizing detail design. They have inquired if RTC is aware that the company providing the padding paneling system. Does not offer a design life for their product. And noted, as noted in the technical note, could you please confirm if this is still the product you wish to proceed with? So the designers can update the design details accordingly. So I went back to them to say we have a meeting tonight to discuss, would, would there be no warranty at all on the current choice? I'm still looking to undertake the work in October. What warranties do the alternative products have? And I've had no response. I sent that to them first September, so, um, I haven't got any out of this.
I mean, certain councillors spend a lot of time choosing that particular failure. And I think it's the preferred choice of everybody because it blends in.
It's changed since then. There was a working party down at the, uh, the site and, uh, they changed it on site. So it's not the one that we discussed in the meeting.
Councillor Boyd.
Um, I don't think that we can spend anything that doesn't have a warranty of like any time period at all. So it could literally fall to pieces in a year.
So it won't cost us any money because the Herfordshire council are covering the cost.
But will Herefordshire council recover that cost if we go for something with no warranty? No, they won't.
But, but that's, sorry, but I think that's Carla's station, wants to know if, if the alternatives had any warranty on them. We still don't even know that, do we?
No, but I think we should wait and find out.
Herfordshire council, honey, is still tax paid.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have to get a move on with it. Otherwise, they're not going to have anything awarded in time for the October work.
But it will be exactly the same as the road there to get it done, get it hurried up, get it covered quickly and then all falls to pieces.
I think that's a fair article.
True.
Not at all.
Okay. I can, I can, it could be, um, I can try and see if I can escalate it, um, to somebody else. Uh, obviously it's cutting it short for it's be done with the proposed road closure in October. Um, but I can't see what I can do. What do you want to do? Because obviously the next meeting is potentially when.
One to Honesty.
Yeah.
Councillor Boyd.
I think we've got to look at this as if it's our money we're spending. Would you go and get something for that much money with no warranty on it? No, you wouldn't. Um, it's public's money at the end of the day, whether it comes from Hereford council or Ross Town council, it's public money they're spending. We've got an absolute, um, responsibility to spend it correctly.
What's your proposal?
My proposal is to leave it until we get an answer, starting now.
Well, absolutely, councillor Liston. We, we're not actually in a position of making any decisions on this because nobody's responding to us. So we can't leave anything that we don't have any responsibility for doing. Well, we, we, what are we leaving? We're, we're not employing the people, we're not buying the work, we're not sanctioning the people to go and start the work. There's nothing for us to leave because it's not our decision or our budgets to have anything to do with it.
Exactly, there is, because Herfordshire councillors are, they're still happy to go ahead.
I've responded, asking if there's a warrant and they haven't responded. So if they respond, we can't do anything.
Exactly. And we can wait on asking.
I'm just leaving.
Can we have one person speaking at a time, please?
It's all right.
So if, if, there's a, there's a proposal from councillor Boyd that we do nothing.
That we leave it and I didn't say that we do nothing, that we chase up the emails and try and get a response. And I don't, and also get in touch with other suppliers and see if they offer any, um, warranty.
Absolutely.
My understanding is that there was a, there was a, a, a choice, um, that was made. Then that was changed by the working group to this new one that blended in. My recommendation is that we ask for the clerk to chase up on this warranty. And if the other product that we previously wanted has a warranty, then we go with that one. Well, then there's probably going to be no warranty and we're stuck with this intent. So we just have to proceed.
I think you're a very answer the same, but it's just different, just different colours. So one hasn't got warranty, the other one has got. Yes.
So proposal, councillor Otting?
Well, it's, it's, well, you're telling me there is no, no proposal.
This is just to receive an update. We don't actually, we don't actually have anything to vote.
Probably we'll ask a question.
Well, Balfour BT have asked if they have inquired if RTC is aware that the company providing the padding paneling system. Does not offer a design life for the product as noted in the technical notes. Could you please confirm if this is still the product you wish to proceed with? So the designers can update the design details accordingly.
No, it's not the same as warranty, is it?
It's a, it's a different word.
Is this, sorry, isn't this part of the general way that everybody now is trying to add? Some clauses to not be responsible if it goes to law later on.
The thing is, by Hereford questioning, whether we want to go with that, obviously. There's a reason why they're questioning that. They've looked into it.
I, I think we, we have to, 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 to move with caution. My, my suggestion would be that we, we email Herefordshire council or Balfour BT. And we say to them, if we don't go with this because the design, there isn't a design life. Then what happens with the loan voters? Does it get pushed back? Do we put it on hold? Does it still have to happen in that time period? If they return and say, yes, it's got to happen after that, then we need to make a really quick decision.
Yeah, very good.
That's, okay, that's followed with Herefordshire then.
I think there's a point we need to do this.
Councillor McAvoy.
You got a point you want to make, yeah?
Sorry, did you want to say this? No, it's just, um, um, councillor Stark asked me to ask a member of the public who had a case of a valid point. Um, and all he wanted to say was that Balfour BT are raising this, as an issue, maybe it is a real concern.
You'll have to.
I agree quickly.
No, no, my point is, it's quite a, quite a important point. It should be put to RTC. This is every council's duty. They're the ones paying for it. They're the ones taking the decision finally through the cabinet member, aren't they, Blaber? They should not be asking us to give a cast iron guarantee. They're the ones who should be saying, we are happy with the product. And we will go ahead and.
What he's not saying.
That's exactly what.
It's nice to see us. We always know that member involves us. Now they are.
No, listen, this particular point, it is down to the.
Before we were, I think we need to have a session. After all, they're actually paid quite a lot of money to do this work and there's mostly volunteers around this table.
Well, we've got free county councillors, actually.
Yeah, but most of us are volunteers.
But there are free county councillors.
So, yeah, who was sitting around this table that's volunteers this evening?
But all I'm saying is we could point out that Herefordshire council are happy with this guarantee.
Yeah.
So they should take the risk. They should take the risk. I'm not denying what.
But they won't tell.
Sorry, can we have? Okay, let's, let's have one. Final vote from councillor Farrell.
It's just pretty much what we've just discussed. It's just making sure Herefordshire council.
It's just making sure the Herefordshire Council then say, yeah, okay, we are happy with the work they're going to do. So if anything happens, it falls back on them.
Yeah, of course.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Because it seems to me we were only asked to choose the colour, weren't we? We weren't given a choice of product, just the colour. So we're happy with our choice of colour.
Yeah, we were given the choice, yeah.
We're going to be the final decision.
We'll move back to, back to Eric. Okay, so a fit of representatives and outside bodies. The point representatives of outside bodies where required. There are currently three organisations without representative. So whether they're present or not, they don't be happy to be appointed to these organisations.
And can I just say that the community association have asked for two representatives?
They haven't got anyone on the board.
Yeah.
Can we appoint councillor Harrison in her absence? Is that unfair?
Yes.
Councillor McAvoy.
Yeah, I did look at the basement youth trust, I would be interested.
Yep.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Brave man.
I'd interest you in the Parochial Church Council, as well as the community association as well.
One at a time.
This is progress, okay. Okay, so I'll do the others by exception, assuming no one else wants to be appointed. Are there any updates from these organisations?
We have a meeting of the Ross Charity Trust next week.
Yep.
Should be attended.
I've got a meeting with the education.
Although I'm not resident for the Parochial Church Council, I've been dealing with them on the closure of the two paths around the church because of political problems. They were having to close the prow, and I managed to save my thousand pounds on what areas of the church. Fortunately, given the structural engineer report, they no longer have to close the prow, because the danger is within, the cut and leash within that. So they are not having to close the two prowls, so they won't be incurring any costs, actually.
Okay, so that brings us to.
I did it, because.
So can we just vote on the appointing councillor McAvoy on to?
I was looking to have a vote, because everyone is favour. Thank you.
Okay, unanimous.
Because the next item is to confirm the date of the next scheduled meeting, 13th of October, because we have the mismanagement. And then we do have a confidential item to go, so thank you to members of the public for attending. Just going to be in the.